Dilegence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I am Mary Beals, and I am the board president for the next five minutes. Anyway, it is my duty to preside over this meeting and to ensure that electronically that we are connected, which we are. And the purpose of this meeting is to swear in our new board members and then also to, what?
Reorganize.
Reorganize, restructure the board, because at this time, there will be the election of a president, a vice president, a secretary, and a treasurer. And then the remaining fifth board member will be a director. So that's where we're at. But before we go into this, we need to approve the agenda. And so at this time, is there anyone who wishes to add or delete anything?
I do think that our item number five needs to be deleted because we have completed the vote of office prior to this meeting. So that will be a formality, not the actual vote. We've taken the new board members have already been voted and swearing in.
So.
I need to do roll call, Mary.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Beals?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
President.
Green?
Aye.
Stokes?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Thanks for reminding me. Anything else in regards to the agenda?
Well, I have a question as far as, and this is for our new people that are joining us. Are you comfortable with voting on the J policies tonight? You've had time to read them. Do you have questions? Do we need to table that?
I don't think they can make that suggestion until the call, until the. So.
Kind of like to table it.
I don't think we can make that decision until we have to go through the process of.
Okay.
Okay. So basically, the board members that are new cannot.
That's right.
Do this. However, this present board can amend the agenda to table the policies. So what is the feeling of the present board?
Well, I think it's only right that the new board members have an opportunity to go over those and know what they're talking about before they make a vote on it. So yeah, I would say table it.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I just think it's more ethical.
Okay.
I, as superintendent, I think that's okay. I also would like to remind the board that all of these policies are required. And so with that in mind, I'm not like tabling it. We can certainly do that. That will put us behind recommended policies. That would put us, because we've already did this once, and we moved that once, that would put us three months behind. Which is, which is fine. Like, it's not like anybody's coming after us for that. But we think these are required policies.
My thing is, when I first got on the board, there were so many of these policies. I had to spend almost two weeks reading through them before I understood what we actually had. And the thing is, is, you know, I agree with you. We're probably going to have to approve them regardless, but I think it's only fair that the new members have an opportunity to actually understand what they're voting on, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to table the reading of the J policies until next meeting.
And actually, you don't need to make a motion to table them.
Oh, yeah.
You're going to amend the agenda. So you need to.
I would like to amend the agenda to take off the reading of the J policies for this meeting and put them on next meeting.
Second step.
Okay, roll call.
Beal?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Stokes?
Aye.
Okay, so moving on. At this time, we have our three board members, two new ones, Casey and Amanda, and then our returning board member, Donna. And so I think, I'm not sure about the swearing in. If I know we did this at the Wednesday or the Thursday before we broke. So is this going forward?
My understanding is that they have been sworn in by the county official, Stephanie Keys. And at this point, moving forward, you would move right into the section of officer elections.
Okay.
And Mary, you fulfill that and you run that piece until the new board president is in place. And then at that point, the new board president takes over and fulfills the additional election.
Okay, okay.
And so you are presiding over the new board president.
Okay. I think I'm a little over my five minutes. Oh, listen, listen. So the first position is president of the board. And I think everyone that is here has an idea of the roles and responsibility of that position. I need a nomination.
I nominate Donna Brazil as president.
I second that nomination.
Okay. So going forward then, we can do this two ways. We can do this by writing the name on a paper, or we can just go forward with a oral signification of that nomination. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, we only have one nominee. I think a vote by voice would be appropriate.
Okay. So I guess we do roll call.
Beal?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
My question is, is should the new board members be voting on this president? No. Okay. Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Stokes?
Aye.
Okay, so.
Yep.
Yeah, now I get to sit in the seat. Okay.
And so at that point, Donna can move to take over and do the election moving forward. And I do believe at this point, incoming board members will see you one at a time as well.
Congratulations, Donna.
Thank you.
Oh, congratulations, Mary.
Yeah, thank you. I gotta go like this.
Gonna be a brat, though.
And so for moving forward, I believe the two new board members as well. Amanda Young, Amanda Young. You guys are able to take offices as well. We will move to the vice president, and then I believe it's the treasurer, and then I believe it's the secretary from there. And so please consider you can nominate yourself. You can nominate any of those up here as well. So. And I believe, Stanley, I believe.
I was treasurer.
You were treasurer?
Yeah.
And Mark was secretary. Okay, and Donna was vice president. Is that correct?
Yep.
So, Mary, you might have to guide me on this. I've never done that before. I think that Stanley is done voting at this point as well, now that the new board member, the new board president has his place.
Exactly. That is correct.
I believe so.
Then I would like to very.
And then two other new board members then need to come up.
Come in the seat.
Up in the empty seats.
That's correct. So I would like to invite our two new board members up.
If you run, I'm going to be up done.
Run where? Run out?
You will officially be seated. As members of the board.
Thanks for warming my seat.
Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome our two new board members.
Nominations are now open for board vice presidents.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're talking.
Yeah.
Well, we need a, we need a nomination for.
For vice president.
Vice president.
Someone that you'd like to nominate, yourself as an option?
Well, I would say that it would be honorable if our other district board member would step up as vice president. Ms. Sykes?
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Is that a nomination?
That is a nomination.
All righty. Do you, when you'd like to nominate, vice president?
I second the nomination.
Okay. All right. So, roll call, please.
Okay, sorry, Brazil?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Stokes?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Hill first.
Aye.
Your first vote.
Good. Real good.
Okay. And our next person that we're going to nominate is going to be board secretary. But do you have a nomination?
Yeah, I nominate myself. I like the job.
I second that nomination.
I'm all in favor of that, too. Okay. So Mark Green will be nominated as our board secretary. Kathy?
Brazil?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Hill first.
Aye.
Stokes?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
We're following directions, as you can tell. Okay. I need a nomination for board treasurer. I'd like to nominate Casey.
I'll second that.
Okay, Brazil?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Hill first.
Aye.
Stokes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I have it, and you're, you gotta watch all the numbers.
Okay.
All right. We're ready to sign our affidavits. Kathy, do you have the affidavits?
Yes.
Nice.
Yes.
Good. I don't remember that. Busy day. Okay. Yep. We'll go. Is there anyone that signed in for public participation? Okay, skip that. Superintendent Principals report. I had some questions. So for those of you that aren't here on a regular basis, each month, we get really comprehensive reports from our board, or to the board from the administration, and it's a really good way for us to keep a thumb on what's going on and ask questions when we come across something we have no clue. So I personally make, go through everything and mark my notes and put my questions in there so that I don't lose them. And in regard to Dan's report, it was amazing the amount of rapport that was built as the conversations were going around for the ballot issue. Because, you know, we have a new superintendent. They had known him. He presented as an individual in the district who is a living, breathing taxpayer here. And I got a lot of feedback from people seeing how comfortable they were talking to him. So kudos to you for doing a great job. The PR was phenomenal. And I think, is it too early to ask what the J turn classes are going to be?
No, I think that's more important.
Can you give me, tell us just a few of them?
Oh, we have ghost hunting again. We have a national parks one. We have students going swimming and ice skating. One of the teachers volunteered to do a lot of the planning, so she has taken most of that off. So those are the ones that I can think of right now.
Oh, cool. And.
To be tomorrow.
Oh, I think it's a great program. And so the CTE program has been working out in the community, and they did a project for one of the veterans couples in town. They happened to be friends with her. And they were delighted, and I think he was extremely thrilled to be a part of the veteran celebration. That was just absolutely awesome. And as far as the question about sending notes from the board to different staff members, I don't have a problem with that. We need a system. But as I recall, we moved board meetings up earlier so staff could participate, and we've not seen anybody.
Yeah, and I think the intention was to see the board having to start bringing.
Okay, all right. Because I would love to have somebody come in, you know, and do a presentation and say, hey, look at, we've got this new thing, or this is working, like when they did the panorama. That was awesome.
Yeah, you will see that starting in January.
Okay, good. Anybody else have questions?
Again, and I'd like to reiterate what Donna had said, but Mr., was it Kaczylka? I can't, I have a hard time. Kaczylka? Yeah, I want to say that he really stepped up, and I want, you know, your support for vocational and allowing those boys, those kids to get out there. The veterans are very, very close to my heart, as most of you folks know. And I was just thrilled with the fact that they, they couldn't, apparently, they couldn't go to a certain class. So instead of taking the class, they went out and put in steps in a ramp for a veteran family that really, really needed the help. I can't tell you how much I, I personally appreciate that. So thank you. I do have a question about the tardiness, however, part on the tardiness. To me, it wasn't really clear what those figures represented.
Students with 90% attendance or higher, but not including tardies in that number.
Well, I understand, but you listed a percentage of tardiness, but I didn't know if it was a percentage that were tardy or weren't tardy.
No, that's the percentage of students with 90% attendance. So they've been here 90% of the time or more. It does not include tardies.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I was just a bit confused about the way the, way the report read is on. Okay, great. That's fine.
And on Annie's report, she's doing the parade, in case you guys have nothing going on next week. CTE kids are doing a really cool float. And she wants to use this as an opportunity to thank people for the vote on the ballot issue. So Amy was on that committee that still has the signs or the banners. There's one still on horse. We want those, if you get them here to the school, so she has them, and then thank yous. And the kids that participate in the parade will carry those with the really cool float. That is really cool. And that's all I have. And as Megan's report, I don't know. Is there anything that we can do about the odor that appears in the front hallway?
Yes.
It's horrible. It's like dead under there.
It involves a frozen pipe out of the back that it needs to be thawed regularly.
It's special. That's all I have as far as questions. Tony, what do you have?
One of the things that I wanted to add on here, but I was too late, when we were talking attendance, our first trimester awards assembly, we awarded 27 students perfect attendance.
That's great. That's cool.
27.
That's very good to hear. That's all I have. Anybody else?
All good.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one. We're trying to get you guys, buddy. The only other question I have is regarding our new business person. Are they going to attend board meetings?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. Any others?
I did tell her that I would rotate her, too.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because if a question comes up, we really need to be able to get an answer. Very, great. Moving on to new business for the consent of agenda. Need a motion to, for the regular meeting minutes and to accept resignations, recommendations for renewals and terminations, and financial reports. Can I have a motion, please?
To approve the meeting minutes. I make a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
You have a trouble. Mark's seconding. Resignations, recommendations, terminations, renewals, you have that in front of you from tonight? Yes. It's very sad. You need a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations, resignations, non-renewals, terminations, and retirements.
I'll second that.
Mark, go second. Any questions about the financial report section? We'll go ahead and consult on those.
No.
Financial report.
I approve, approve financial reports as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, Brazil?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Hill first.
Aye.
Stokes?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve payables for October 2025.
I approve the October 25th, 2025 payroll.
I'll second that.
Okay, Brazil?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Hill first.
Aye.
Stokes?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Okay, we've tabled the final readings of the J and K policy. Need a, any discussion on the approval of contract for services with LIVBALANCE?
No, they look pretty good to me.
I need a motion to approve the contract for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for, what is it? LIVBALANCE?
I second.
Your second?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Hill first.
Aye.
Stokes?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Okay, 1% sales tax check from the city. As a lot of you know, a couple of years ago, we passed a penny sales tax to help support our CTE program. This year has been the banner year for sales tax, but it was really interesting to look at the charge and look at the month-to-month comparisons. It's a little behind the last year, but that income, that monthly income's made huge difference in that program. So it, that information's available if you want to look at it and see what's coming. Love to have you do that. Library update, would you like to do that?
Yeah, you bet. I am super excited to announce, as many of you already know, we're able to hire a librarian after also nine months of search, Mike McDonald, who retired last May and then last August, and then he is now retired this January 15th, when he is last day, and he is currently training our new librarian through his retirement. And the greatest thanks to everybody that participated in that, but the greatest thanks came from his wife, who said, please let him go home.
So my host, but three, so we were.
Yes, we're very excited. Mike's very relieved. And, you know, as Mike is, he's agreed to be around for additional training when it comes for state reporting, et cetera. So yes, we finally have a librarian. We are now looking for a librarian assistant. If anybody's interested in being a librarian assistant, that job search has begun. And again, for public knowledge, we hired a librarian in conjunction with the Southern Teller County Library District, and an assistant is through them entirely. So they're, they're moving that charge. But we're very happy to let Mike have a life.
Not hers, happy as Mike's wife.
Thirty, I think 31 years.
That just doesn't happen anymore. Update on the audit?
I spoke with the auditors today. They're in the final stages. We meet with them on Thursday afternoon. Our, they are very confident that we are on time. They finished the, was it their cash reconciliations? They finished that. They have two more pieces that they have to finish. And then, again, they didn't say they're done, but they said we will, they should be done off the table. So we are on time.
What's our deadline on that?
We have until the end of December to file that. Elaine Hayden has already filed the preliminary pieces on that. So this will be the final.
So they're pretty sure we can get in and on.
We have to get in on time. And they know we are the top priority with the auditors. I would like to say one thing for the, for the board's understanding of that process. School district has to file an audit as, you know, part of, part of what we do. It's a, it's a consistent thing. It's very hard for rural schools to, you know, do that. I work with Stephanie Hunt at the Teller Department of Education, and we were talking about this challenge that we have getting this done every year. She let me know that there are approximately 25 school districts that didn't file an audit last year, and there are probably half a dozen or more this year that are unable to file an audit because auditors will not take on their schools or take on their programs. So the state is really wrestling right now with how, how do we hold districts accountable when auditors are no longer interested in working with public schools because of the excessive economic rent tape that goes along with working in an educational environment? So while our auditors have been on top of it this year and et cetera, I feel happy to say that we have at least three offers for auditors for the next process that we will be looking at over the next couple of years that we'll bring to the board as well. So we're not one of those school districts that's going to get left out and cold.
Excellent. Excellent.
Our next agenda item, it's, there's two that go together, four and five. So BOSI's update. As you know, Woodland Park School Board's had a turnover, and both of the board members that are no longer on their board were on our BOSI's board. So Katie, who's going to talk to you in a minute, is working to find out who from the Woodland Park Board is going to fill those positions. And then my understanding is, tell me if I'm wrong, we'll need to reorganize that board also to come in compliance with all of those pieces that are required. But I'm looking forward to working with their new board. They have a pretty dynamic group of people there. This lets me introduce you to Katie Uvra. She's our new BOSI's Special Ed Director for the U-Pass BOSI's. And she's just going to talk to you a little bit, kind of tell you what's going on. She's with Cadre Reviews already to working with Katie. But I wanted everybody to see her so that you have a name and a face to go together if you haven't met her before. Go ahead, Katie.
So yes, hi, everyone. Katie Uvra, Director of Special Education for U-Pass BOSI's. This is my first year in that role. I've actually worked for U-Pass BOSI's for about 10 years. So I was the transition coordinator. I've been a NICU reviewer, special education coach, ESY principal. And so our BOSI's, oh, I'm sorry, last year I was the assistant director, and then I worked under and very closely with Marcy Palmer, who was the special education director for over 20 years. She retired, and I am in this role this year. So I'm really excited to be here in this role, serving the school districts in this way. So U-Pass BOSI's is made up of Woodland Park and Cripple Creek School District. So, U-Pass BOCES is made up of Woodland Park and Cripple Creek School District. You've probably heard we used to be a three-member school district, AU, or Administrative Unit, where Manatee Springs was a part of U-Pass BOCES as of July 1. It's now just Woodland Park and Cripple Creek, so Manatee Springs is on their own. The benefits of being a BOCES, that stands for the Board of Cooperative Education Services, and what that means is that there are BOCES set up throughout the state of Colorado that consists of smaller rural school districts. And the benefit of being in a BOCES is that because we have such smaller populations within the rural districts, it wouldn't make sense to bring on like a full-time special education director or a full-time speech-language pathologist. We have special service providers that we share between our districts that serve our students with disabilities. And so, we have, for example, a speech-language pathologist, an occupational therapist, and a physical therapist, and an occupational therapist assistant, and a behavior specialist. So, those positions are shared between Woodland Park and Cripple Creek, as well as myself, serving those two school districts. So, it's divided up. We have about two, and this number fluctuates kind of day-to-day, sometimes month-to-month. We have students who are qualifying for special education day-to-day, month-to-month, and some students who are not qualifying. So, currently, we have about 250 IEPs where, for students who are on IEPs that we serve BOCES-wide. But really, that's it, pretty much in a nutshell, and I wanted to kind of open it up to any questions. Like Donna said, I am going to be presenting to the new board in Woodland Park on, I believe it's not this Wednesday, but the following Wednesday, and I will be trying to recruit two volunteers to join our U-Pass BOCES board. That's made up of five members, so Stephanie and Donna are part of my U-Pass BOCES board from Cripple Creek. I have one member-at-large who is not a part of Woodland Park or Cripple Creek School District, so they're board, so it's a member-at-large, and then I'm going to try to recruit two volunteers from Woodland Park. So, I'll be presenting to them as to what BOCES is and see who wants to join the party. Yeah, so what questions do you guys have for me?
I don't think I have any at this point.
Okay. I come up here pretty much every Tuesday, I'm here, so if you ever want to come and, you know, come find me, or you can email me, call me, text me, I'm available, so.
I'm sure something will come up, absolutely. Thanks.
Yeah, and congratulations to the board members. Mary Stewart, thank you so much for your years of service.
And I would like to bookend that just by saying, working with Katie this year and working with Woodland Park has been a pleasure. We've been able to move some things forward, and I'm very happy about that.
Thanks, Katie. Want to do a preliminary mill levy?
You bet. So, the preliminary mill levy is just an educational piece I put in here for the board because next week, probably next Thursday, we are going to have to have a special board meeting to vote on the final mill levy. We'll have it all ready to go. We should hear from the county on the 10th, since we're going to plan something on the 11th. We'll literally start the meeting. There will be a motion to approve the mill levy, we'll vote on it, and we'll close the meeting, and that's the whole thing. But I wanted you to see it ahead of time, what that looks like. And this reflects the valuation as of August, and you will see at the end, if we're, the estimated full-fledged mill levy, the 11.128 does include the recent ballot for A that added to that. So, that's included.
It's higher.
And it will be a higher income as well. So, just please familiarize yourself with this between now and next week, and if you have any questions. We do have Kathy and Elaine Hayden will be working on this on our end here in the building. We also have Kutaq Rock, who did the bond issue with us 20 years ago. They are walking us through the transition as it becomes part of the mill levy, and so they will be looking at all of this on the front side before it ever comes to us. So, if you're not an accountant like me, you, we have professionals that are really looking this over and making sure that we are doing it. What it comes down to is the school district, we are required to validate and actually request our mills, and if we don't do it in a five-day period, the county can decide not to pay us. So, it's one of those, sort of jumping through a hoop. We get it on the 10th, we have to have it back to them by the 15th.
Bond gets paid off.
The bond is paid off. It is done at this point. So, we should start seeing the income from ballot issue for A if it comes in court.
Okay, so we're going to be at the CASB conference on the 11th.
Yes, we are.
Are we going to try to meet here quickly before we head down the hill?
No, because we don't know when we will get it. We will do it online.
Okay.
And Kathy and Elaine will set it up during the day when Elaine is here. Kathy and Elaine will run it online. We'll have it posted like normal, it'll be available for anybody to check in, and we will all, I mean, we might be sitting at CASB having a cup of coffee, and we will log in. It's public record, it's not an executive session.
Right.
You know, and it's all login, and we'll log in, and you guys will vote on it, but it'll take maybe eight minutes tops.
Okay.
And I will arrange that and let you know when and where.
Okay.
And we have to make that happen. So, and if you're not attending CASB, or if that happens, you can come to the school, or you can do it, be a computerized way, so.
No, we just need to get it done.
Kathy, can you make sure you post that there's going to be more than three people at CASB conference?
I have that ready.
So that we don't get in hot water?
Yeah, I have it.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
I would like to say a few words after adjournment.
Okay.
I have something.
What?
Okay. From the retired.
Oh, God, there we go.
Yeah. I think I...
You did say a few words, right, Mary?
I have something for the, on the reflection piece. So, here.
Take it.
I'm passing my torch.
Okay.
And I want you to know, Dan...
We should take these with us.
Yeah, Dan, he has the fuel oil. I do. And he's going to share it with you. I do. I'm not doing that.
Thank you, Mrs. Beals.
You're welcome. Here you go.
Cute.
So, with passing this torch, I always had this mantra, and it's been six years, I believe. So, do you know what that is? Anyway, I'm a stand, but I'm going to come on the spot. One, your change agents, change agents, you got that? And you have your hands on hope. Put your hand up. Look back there, see that big sign that came on six years ago? And hope has not disappointed us. And we are united in purpose in mind to serve our children and our community. So, moving on.
Good. Thanks, Mary.
We know we're halfway.
Part of our board reflection, we have to say, thank you to present, and...
Definitely. Stan, can I have your gift present? So, just a little, simple thank you, though, from the school district to you for your service over these past few years. And Mary Beals?
Yes.
I have something for you.
You do?
I do. Mary Beals, can you come up?
Yes.
You're like the theatrics occasionally, so there's a little bit of theatrics to this.
Yes.
Can anybody guess when Mary Beals started in this district?
Oh.
I'll tell you this, I was not born yet. We have, under unconfirmed terms, one Gary Lou, who was here a moment ago, who was far back as she can find, a photo of Mary Beals in the 1973 Cripple Creek picture yearbook. Is that correct?
That is. I was the first grade teacher.
First grade teacher in 1973. So, again, we're talking 52 years of service to this district and this community. Now, Mary, what this says, I'm going to read it to you.
That's good.
You go the extra distance for children. Your daily walk alongside children has taught them how to walk by your example and where. Mary Beals' lifetime of dedicated service enriches the lives of students and inspires all of us. And if you're in the audience, you will notice there's a shelf here.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to...
Here, can you hold that for me?
I can see it.
I think we need to put something on the shelf. Years and decades and decades of service, and what better way to represent that? Yellow and red covers.
Yes. Chuck Taylor.
Chuck Taylor.
Yes. Chuck Taylor. Yes.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
And you're going to have a minute, a minute. I would like to invite everybody, there's a reception planned for our exiting board members right after this. We have some cake, we have some tea, we have some coffee, and Mary has promised to give us a speech.
I have. Yeah, okay. I appreciate that. Yeah, really, thanks a lot. I, I could write a book on this.
You're going to?
Can I jump over it?
We could use a little bit of book writing.
Yeah. Anyway, yeah, carry on.
So, once the meeting is adjourned, please join us for a short reception.
Can one of our new board members like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll do it. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
My second. All those in favor?
Brazil?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Hill first?
Aye.
Stokes?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.